Members, the first order of business this evening is the adoption of the council minutes of July 7, 2008. Motion by councillor Peter Angelo, second by councillor Douda to adopt those minutes, any comments or changes. Having seen none, all those in favor, the motion is carried. Thank you. This time I'll ask for any disclosures of a beginner interest by any members of council. Councillor Thompson?
Yes, report AM 2008 021. I have a conflict with respect to that.
So noted. Councillor Carrio?
Thank you, Worship, on undercommunications and comments, requests from various BIAs for pay parking rate changes in the tourist car. I have a commercial parking lot down in that area where they want to change the rates.
Okay, so noted. Are there any others? Okay, we'll move on to deputations. This evening, I'd like to bring council's attention to the fact we have Mr. Mike Pickering in attendance this evening. He's the 2008 Canadian trap shooting champion. I'd ask Mr. Pickering to come forward, please. Mike hasn't brought his gun this evening. And that recalls trap shooter Mike Pickering won the 2008 Canadian trap shooting championship in Hamilton during the weekend of July 5 and 6, 2008. In the preliminaries, Mike successfully hit a perfect 200 of 205 incredible play targets, then 74, 75 targets in the finals. Standing one and a half meters from the trap shooting house, competitors are required to shoot the target flying through the air at approximately 90 kilometers per hour. Mike won a provincial championship in 2005, and three years he has won a number of smaller events. He has been involved in the sport since 2001, and Mike completes an honest foot at the 2008 provincial championships in Hamilton. And on behalf of the members of council, Mike, we're very proud of you as a Niagara Falls resident. We'd like to make this presentation to you with our congratulations to add to your collection as the 2008 Canadian trap shooting champion, myself and members of council. Congratulations.
We're recognizing the sport and everything else. I really appreciate it.
Where do you shoot? What club now?
The Toronto Conservation Club. Any place interested in coming out and trying the sport, whether Thursdays and Saturdays.
The council members, councillor Carrio?
Hey, Worship, I do do a little bit of trap shooting, and I don't know if anyone knows how difficult it is. And to do what Mike has done is a fantastic accomplishment. I hit like 1 out of 200. So I understand how tough it is, and I really congratulate you.
Congratulations, mate. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask the clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda. Mr. Raffia? We do have an application, AM 2008 21, official plan and zoning bylaw amendment, application for the property known as 5471, 5491, and 5507 River Road in vacant lane on the west side of River Lane and on northwest corner of River Road and John Street. The applicant is the Niagara Falls Point Limited Partnership, and the agent is Mr. Mike Goldberg of the Goldberg Group. I'd like to inform council, we have a request for a deferral. And the pleasure of council, we do have legal counsel here for the applicant. Councillor Fisher?
Second.
Moved by councillor Fisher, second by councillor Anoni. Any discussion to the matter? Having seen none, all those in favor, find the matter is deferred. Thank you very much. Thank you, and I apologize to the members of the gallery and the residents if you come back, looking at the application coming back in September.
September the 8th.
September the 8th, I believe. You'll be notified as well. Thank you so much. Hey, Mr. Clerk, could you introduce then the next item on the agenda, please?
Worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city zoning bylaw to recognize an existing apartment building at 5058 Huron Street. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, June 20, 2008, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to ask the director of planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hurlavich?
Thank you, Worship. This property involves an existing three-story apartment building on the south side of Huron Street. The property is located between Fourth Avenue and Third Avenue. It involves a property that's approximately 3,900 square feet in lot area. The property as well is largely surrounded by -- so you can see the building in front of you. It's a three-story existing building. The property is largely surrounded by existing single detached dwellings. To the northwest of the property is the Maple Street Park. The site plan before council this evening is to basically recognize the existing three-story building and its current location. It has five existing residential units in the property. The current owner added a fifth unit to the building within the last couple of years. There are three existing parking spaces located to the west side of the building, and all of this is to recognize the existing building. The lands are designated residential in the official plan. The official plan provides for apartment buildings to be developed in areas where there's close proximity to parks, transit routes, commercial areas. They can also develop that. And because of the higher density of this particular property, because of its small size, there are a number of nonapplying policies in the official plan which affect this property. The building has existed for a number of years, and therefore it's achieved a degree of compatibility with the surroundings. The lands are currently zoned R2 residential, single-family and two-family. The applicant has requested an R5E zone. This is an established zone within our zoning bylaw and reflects the current density of the property of 55 units an acre. But because it is an existing zone and existing property, they require a number of relief to the typical standards. So therefore, they're seeking a recognition of a lot frontage of 95 feet rather than 115 feet. They're seeking a front yard depth of 3.9 feet rather than the typical requirement of 24.8 feet. The rear yard is already again established at 5.6 feet. This would be lesser than the 32.8 feet that the bylaw requires. The interior side yard, as well, varies from 7.9 feet to 7.8 feet. Sorry, instead of 7.9 feet, they have 7.8 feet, and they're looking for a lot coverage slightly larger than the standard zone of 44 percent. They're looking to recognize the existing height of 24 feet, and they're also looking to alter the parking space requirements. We don't know of any parking problems. We are supporting the particular application as before council. As I say, it's an existing building. They're really trying to recognize the use of the property through the zoning bylaw, and staff is recommending to council that the application can be supported for the R5E zone with those special provisions to recognize the two-and-a-half-story, R5-unit apartment building. Those are the highlights of the application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlavich. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Interior Municipal Board deferring any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone present other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this bylaw amendment? Once again, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this proposed bylaw amendment? Having seen none, at this time, and council will hear from the applicant or his representative.
It's an existing building. It is 3,900 square feet, which means that if you divide by five, you get 800 square feet. Some of the units are a little bit smaller, and some of them are a little bit bigger. But it certainly looks like an apartment building, and it's been there, and it's inherent street, it's close to parking, it's close to the amenities, I mean, the areas where people would shop and so forth, and parks. And it's a nice building, a nice building inside. So I'd ask you to approve it, and I don't think there's anybody objecting to it.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Sinclair. Are there any questions from members of council? Yes, councillor Wing?
I was just wondering if we could strengthen the wording. At the bottom of page three, just above conclusion, it says the owner should advise future tenants that on-street parking is not available for required parking. Could we strengthen that to shell and put in a provision that they must be informed? Because I dealt with a situation a year or two back on another section of Huron where there was a building without sufficient parking for the tenants, and I had a situation where a single mother who was a college student trying to better her and her child's life who had been told by the landlord that there was on-street parking available to her, and she kept getting parking tickets because of the instructions she'd been given. So I'd just like it to be a little bit firmer that the owner is obligated to tell tenants that in all future years.
Do you want to incorporate that in the motion eventually?
Yes, please.
Absolutely. No objections.
Okay. Anyone else who'd like to ask a question, Mr. Sinclair? Anybody from the gallery with regard to any questions in the application? Okay, at this point then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded, in the pleasure of council.
The report with councillor Wing's comments?
Moved by councillor Thompson to include councillor Wing's comments as their second to that motion. Councillor Fisher, any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion is carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Sinclair. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city zoning bylaw to permit a single detached dwelling at 9130 Chipewa Creek Road. Notice was given in accordance with -- was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, June 20, 2008, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside council chamber.
And once again, I'd like to ask the director of planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hurlavich?
Thank you, Worship. This property involves an existing lot backing onto the Welland River. It's approximately 3.3 acres. The lands are located on the south side of Chipewa Creek Parkway, and as I say, back onto the Welland River. They're almost directly opposite Garner Road. The lands to the north are used for industrial purposes. The lands to the east are other single detached dwellings. The lands to the west are vacant lands next to the river. The proponent wishes to demolish the existing dwelling that you saw pictured on the first slide, that exists on the property, and replace that dwelling with a brand-new home that would access Chipewa Creek Road. The other part of this application is to recognize the true line of the floodline for the Welland River and to bring that into conformity. The application itself is in an area that is designated in part open space and in part environmental protection. The open space policies of the official plan do provide for a variety of recreational uses, but they also allow for estate residential where there's an existing dwelling. Therefore, the property is recognized as an estate residential lot within the official plan policies. The environmental protection policies apply to those floodplain lands next to the Welland River. The application, as I explained, is already considered an estate residential property. The proposed dwelling is to be located outside of the floodplain area, and the actual floodplain lands are to be recognized through this application. The lands are currently zoned open space in part and in part hazard land. The open space zone is to remain. We'll add a special provision to that open space to recognize a single detached dwelling as a new and permitted use on the property. The balance of the lands will be zoned hazard land, and those hazard land provisions will reflect the floodplain of the 1 in 100-year storm level. The bylaw will also have a provision for a 30-meter setback for the dwelling, approximately 98 and a half feet, and this is a requirement of the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority with respect to the fish habitat in the river. Therefore, the staff is recommending this particular application. We have found that it complies with the official plan and is supported by the circulated agencies. Staff recommend that council adopt the zoning amendment that's before you tonight. Those are the highlights of the application.
Now, thank you very much, Mr. Hurlavich. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Interior Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this proposed bylaw amendment? And once again, is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Having seen none, then council will now hear from the applicant or his representative. Is the applicant here? And for the record, would you be kind enough to introduce yourself, sir, and your address?
My name's John Bellamy. My wife, Furma.
Good.
We simply would like to replace existing dwelling and build a house that my wife will live in, other than the one that's on the property. That's pretty straightforward.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from members of council, Mr. and Mrs. Bellamy? Anybody, anyone else present who has a question of the Bellamy's? No, having seen none, then at this time, the meeting with the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Councillor Carrio?
Move of recommendation?
Okay, second by councillor Thompson. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion is carried. Thank you very much. Hey, Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider proposed amendments, general amendments to the city zoning bylaw 79200. Notice was given by publishing a notice in the Niagara Falls Review on June 21, 2008. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. And once again, I'd like to ask the director of planning to explain the purpose and the reason for this proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hurlavich?
Thank you, Worship. This application involves all of the lands covered by zoning bylaw 79200, which affects most of the city north of the Welland River plus Chipewa. From time to time, the city undertakes periodic reviews of its zoning bylaws and brings these provisions of the bylaw up to date to reflect current trends and standards. There are 10 proposed amendments that staff are bringing before council this evening, and therefore it affects the whole of the city rather than just one specific property. One of the first amendments being brought forward to council for consideration is to deal with surface parking within R1A to R1E lands, plus R2 lands, plus R3 lands. Under the current bylaw provisions, there are only controls as to how much parking might be permitted in a front yard. Council is aware that this has created some issues in recent times, and therefore we believe that we need to introduce some controls for parking areas on the rest of the lot. In order to better regulate parking within the city, what staff is recommending is that a maximum lot area of 30 percent of the lot be used for parking on the site, and that is to be divided into three possible areas so that 50 percent of the frontage of the property could be used for parking, but no driveway could be larger than 26.2 feet in width. So it's the greater or the lesser of those two dimensions. The exterior side yard parking is also to be limited to 67 percent of the side yard could be used for parking, and then in the rear yard, a maximum of 40 square meters or 430 square feet could be used for parking. So all of these figures will work together to regulate parking. In the drawing in front of you, staff has worked out a typical lot arrangement of a 15-meter-wide lot and demonstrate the way in which the parking would actually be laid out. So on this particular property, if 50 percent of the width of that lot, that would be a 50-foot-wide lot. Driveway of 25 feet in width would be the maximum that would be allowed to provide for two parking spaces in front. The side yard then could accommodate two cars, and the rear yard area by limiting it to 40 square meters could accommodate two additional parking spaces. You can see the building is allowed to occupy 40 percent of the lot. That's the area that's cross-hatched in the middle, and later I'll be getting to a provision that regulates the amount of landscaped open space. So by requiring that certain areas of the lot be landscaped, by restricting the area that could be used for buildings, 40 percent to 30 percent of the lot that could be used for parking actually would regulate the building such that about six cars could actually be parked on the lot. Staff is also recommending that there be a new definition introduced for a surface parking area, and this would require that the parking area consist of concrete, asphalt, stone or gravel, or an equivalent of one of those materials. That is, it has to be a maintained surface. It can't just be an area of the property that maybe once was lawn, but the lawn has died because people have been parking a car on it. It must be developed as a parking space. We would also bring in a definition of what constitutes a vehicle, and so therefore any licensed mode of transportation, and we would include trailers, boats, in those recreational vehicles in that definition, but we would also be recommending that those types of vehicles be restricted to the rear yard. That is the 430 square feet of area that's provided for as parking in the rear yard. The staff as well, as I've mentioned, wish to control the amount of landscaped area so that we're actually getting a balance between the area that might be used for parking and the area that would be used for landscaping. And therefore, in the R1A to R1E zones, the R2 and the R3, we would require a minimum of 30 percent of the lot to be landscaped, and we would replace the definition that's currently in the bylaw for landscaping to require that it be an open area, that it be used for the growth and maintenance of grass, flowers, shrubbery, other landscaping. It would include a surfaced walk, a patio, the area around the swimming pool, it would include the swimming pool itself, but it does not include a surface parking area, does not include bus parking, it doesn't include rooftop areas. Some of these elements in the definition, because we're introducing a new definition, would have applicability across the city with respect to landscape open space, but with respect to residential where our concern has been, it was as large as those aforementioned items. And it also does not include any area that would be underneath a permanent roofed structure, because that then becomes part of the lot coverage, which is limited to 40 percent of the lot by the existing bylaw. So those are a number of provisions, so we're actually trying to deal with the parking on-site through three possible mechanisms. The second change that we're introducing to the comprehensive bylaw is to deal with model homes. Staff is recommending that we introduce a definition for model home. Those are the residential units that a builder would typically build and make available as his showcase units as he's promoting and developing a subdivision. We're recommending that no more than 10 or 10 percent, whichever is the lesser, would be allowed to develop. So for instance, a 100-lot subdivision could have no more than 10 units that would be available as model homes. Those model homes would have to meet the zoning bylaw requirements. The reason that we need to introduce this provision is that many of these model homes are erected in the period of time between a draft approval and the registration of the plan, and during that period, our bylaw considers that to be one lot, and we only allow one dwelling per lot, and yet we know that the area is to be developed as a subdivision, and so therefore when we have multiple builders in one subdivision, they all want to have a model of their home, and so we believe 10 would be an appropriate figure as the maximum. As well, we have, as I pointed out, an existing requirement that no more than 40 percent of the lot be used for lot coverage. That is the amount of lot that the buildings and structures can actually cover on that area. We're recommending that we maintain this 40 percent, but that within that 40 percent, 15 percent of the lot area could be used for accessory buildings and structures, up to a maximum of 93 square meters. So again, we're trying to attack this from two areas, so 15 percent of the typical lot that I showed you, 15 meters by 30 meters, would certainly result in a fairly small accessory building, but people with larger lots could soon exceed that size, so therefore we're recommending a limit of 93 square meters or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less, and this will ensure that the accessory buildings do remain subordinate to the residential structures. And accessory buildings would include garages, whether they're attached or detached. It would include garden sheds, it would include gazebos, it would include cupboard structures, all of those items that I mentioned before. Another area that we're recommending to change within our zoning bylaw is the term senior citizen home. That term is not currently defined, and it has created some confusion over the years. The current trend is to call these facilities retirement homes. I believe council has dealt with these applications on a number of occasions to actually permit retirement homes from time to time. So therefore, our recommendation is that we introduce a new definition of retirement home into the zoning bylaw. A retirement home does have a level of care associated with it, and so therefore this could include medical facilities on-site, it could include some physical assistance, it could include a dining room that would be a level of care that many ambulatory seniors would take advantage of, and certainly there would be common lounges so that it's not a typical apartment building, there is a care element to it. We would also recommend that we then delete senior citizen home from our institutional zone and replace the senior citizens home with a retirement home as a permitted use. We're also recommending a new definition be added for cottage rental dwelling. This is again a recent trend. It's basically a detached dwelling that is used on a temporary basis to accommodate the traveling public as an alternate form of accommodation. Again, we would maintain that these cottage rental dwellings only be allowed by council on a site-by-site basis, but by allowing or incorporating the definition of a cottage rental dwelling into the bylaw, we don't have to repeat that with every amending bylaw, and it actually facilitates the administration and implementation of the zoning bylaw with greater ease and streamlines the entire process. greater ease and streamlines the entire process. We're also recommending that we eliminate the floor area requirements for dwelling units in our apartment zones. That's our R5A to R5F zones. These are no longer required as the Building Code Act dictates the size of apartment buildings or apartment units within buildings. It's also contrary to provincial legislation to have municipal bylaws with a different figure than the building code would actually require. One of the other changes that we're recommending is to permit day nurseries within institutional and neighborhood commercial uses. Day nurseries are currently permitted in most other commercial zones and yet they're not permitted in the neighborhood commercial zones, which are closest to where people live. And so therefore, we're recommending that this use be added to any neighborhood commercial use. We also believe that because there's a maximum floor area size for any commercial use within a neighborhood, commercial zone of twenty-four hundred and seventy-nine square feet, that this will limit the size of any day nursery. So anybody within an area where they might worry that these would become quite large, they would be maintained as a fairly small use. The definition of day nursery would be added to the zoning bylaw. And again, this is as licensed by the province of Ontario. We're also recommending that a health center be added to a neighborhood commercial zone. Health center is a defined term within the zoning bylaw and it refers to any fitness facility. It could include martial arts clubs, gymnasium, pools, therapeutic treatments. And so therefore, we're recommending that these be allowed in neighborhood commercial uses. We quite often find applications for martial arts studios, dance and fitness facilities within neighborhood commercial plazas. And our current requirements are overly restrictive. Again, the size of any use in the neighborhood commercial areas is controlled. So again, we believe this would be appropriate to residential areas. We also wish to add a new term we're calling privacy yards. Again, each time we get an application for townhouse condominiums, particularly the bungalow condominiums, there's a privacy area behind each of the townhouses that we've been requiring a seven and a half meter, twenty-five foot rear yard so that there's space for each resident to have an outdoor amenity area. Again, for ease of administration, we're asking that this be introduced as a standard to our R4 zone. Therefore, we're making a number of changes to the bylaw. The first series of changes really affect the landscaped open space, the parking area and the lot coverage with respect to residential, single family, two family and townhouse, street townhouse dwellings. The other changes are really housekeeping, bring the bylaw up to date with respect to a number of current standards. The last thing that I'd just bring to council's attention and that is that although we're making a number of changes today, they're not retroactive. So once the bylaw is in place, no one can expand their, say, their parking area beyond what would be allowed or they can't introduce a larger garage without going through an amendment process, either through this council or through the committee of adjustment, in which case everybody within the area would be notified. But if someone has a driveway which is currently wider than the bylaw would allow, those would continue and they would be recognized as legal nonconforming. They would not be able to expand without going through a process. Therefore, staff is seeking council's support to adopt these amendments as outlined in the report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendments. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendments? And once again, is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendments? At this point, are there any questions for members of council? Yes, Counselor Maves?
Yeah, I'm looking at this diagram of this yard. I'm looking at six cars parked in a really small yard. And I know we've had a problem with the number of cars in certain areas. And does this bylaw address that? I mean, the deeper the lot you have, you can have as many cars as you want, twenty or thirty, if you've got a deep lot.
Okay. Mr. Hurlovich, can you address that? Please.
Thank you, worship. In essence, it does address that by virtue of having maximums requiring a percentage or a maximum figure. So the front yard, for instance, is a maximum of fifty percent of the lot frontage. So in this case, we're using a fifty-foot wide property. But any of our R2 zones, it's a twelve meter wide property, that's forty feet. So the maximum would be fifty percent would be a twenty-foot wide driveway because that's less than the standard of twenty-six feet in width. So you're limited by virtue of that. Again, a large lot in Mount Carmel, which might be eighty feet in width, could not have a forty-foot wide driveway and therefore, by virtue of having fifty percent of its lot frontage, the maximum driveway width there would be the twenty-six and a half feet. So that it would actually limit the amount of parking that could occur in the front yard. The side yard, you're limited to sixty-seven percent of the area. And again, the side yard tends to be fairly narrow. We restrict that to, it's four feet wide for any house that has a attached garage. So obviously, you wouldn't be able to even park a car in a four-foot wide side yard. But if they don't have an attached garage, then we could expect to see an eight-foot wide side yard, in which case then only sixty-seven percent of that could be used for parking. And again, specifying a maximum of fifty square meters. So it's a percentage or a maximum square meters. And then in the rear yard, it is a specified lot area, which is the forty square meters or four hundred and thirty square meters. And so it's depicted there that there would be two cars that would actually be using that area. Four hundred and thirty square meters would be about twenty by twenty-one square feet or twenty-one feet by twenty square feet.
Counselor Maves?
I'm just wondering, say that lot was forty-five meters deep, can you put another six cars back there?
No, because they're restricted in the rear yard between the back of the building and the rear property line. They can't have more than four hundred and thirty square feet. Doesn't matter how deep the lot is. They could have an acre, still only four hundred and thirty square feet in the rear yard behind the house.
Counselor Thompson?
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Hurlovich. Hopefully, this is, and I know this is not retroactive, so it isn't going to help us with our current problems that we have. But could you tell me what kind of effect this would have on the property that we've had discussions at the council on Stanford Green Drive? Would this eliminate the parking of the vehicles that are there?
What it will do, it will allow them or won't allow them to expand beyond what they already have. So if they currently exceed four hundred and thirty square feet of gravelled area, which would be their surface outdoor parking area, they can't make it any larger than that. What they have is what they would obtain. Again, they have some enclosed tent structures that they use for parking of vehicles. Again, they can't make those any larger than what they currently have because there's a, no more than fifteen percent of the property could be used for accessory buildings up to a maximum of a thousand square feet. So if they have an attached garage plus the detached storage facilities in the rear yard, all of those combined can add up to more than a thousand feet. If they have more than a thousand feet, then they're already at their limit.
So you're talking about the existing situation. What about a new property after this is passed? Would this restrict that kind of abuse on the front? Okay. Thank you.
Large lots, you know, there are other deep lots on Stanford Green Drive, which probably have large lawns. But if that was to be sold to somebody with a, you know, a collection of antique vehicles, they would be restricted to a thousand square feet for accessory buildings. They'd be restricted to four hundred and thirty square feet of outdoor parking area in the rear yard. They couldn't go larger than that unless they came to this council or the committee of adjustment.
Four hundred and thirty square feet, there's a couple of cars, eh?
See, if you think of the area that might be in front of a two-car garage as the driveway apron leading to that at the back of the property, and there are a number of residential properties, especially in our old area, that you'd find a two-car detached garage behind the house, typically it's the area between that garage and the back of the house.
Good. Compliments on getting that to us quickly and the change isn't going to help too much the existing situations, but will prevent or hopefully control new ones. The further question on the privacy yards, in that section you have, the dwellings, they have spaces between the dwellings themselves. How do you do that with a linked, say, a bungalow development? How would you have spaces between the houses?
Our bylaw provides the maximum of eight townhouses in a row and then there's a space between the next eight.
Okay, most of them are four, so that would be fine. And you're not saying that the, in a townhouse condominium situation, the amenity area would just be called private space, it wouldn't be dedicated to any particular unit? Is that what you're?
It could be part of the amenity space for the condominium or it could be assigned to that unit, depending on.
Counselor DiDati?
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to quickly congratulate staff. That was a very quick turnaround time on this, very responsive, very multifaceted, obviously it was thought through and somewhat ballsy. So happy to see that it came out that way. Thank you, worship.
Are there any other comments or questions for members of council with respect to the proposed bylaw amendment? Are those present?
Those comments are.
Having seen none, then the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. The pleasure of council. Counselor Maves?
Prove the recommendation.
Seconded by Counselor DiDati. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, the motion is carried. Thank you very much. Members of council, I have a few comments. I'd like to draw your attention to some notable events in our city in the past week. On Monday, July 14th, the Masterson family announced that they were giving up majority ownership in the Niagara Falls Junior B Canucks. Along with them, we are excited about the new ownership in power play, sports and entertainment. And on behalf of the members of council, I'd like to thank Terry and Tim Masterson and their family for their longstanding commitment and their many years of dedication to the Canucks and to hockey in Niagara Falls. We wish them all the best as they continue to be involved and thank them for their significant efforts to guide and direct the Canucks over the years. I was pleased to announce or to attend the 2008 Great Lakes-St. Lawrence City's Initiative Annual Conference in Toronto last week. Along with other mayors and representatives of government and environmental stakeholders, I was able to discuss important information regarding the Great Lakes and their surrounding communities. This year's focus was prosperity, vitality and sustainability. We discussed ways communities can help mitigate the environmental impacts on the lakes and surrounding cities and with the growing challenges of pollution and climate change at hand. It was also important to note how fisheries and shippers are being affected because of the dropping water levels of the upper lakes. Experts will continue to monitor this change and solutions will need to be implemented in the future. As well, we talked about the economic benefits of the Great Lakes Basin. The eight states and two provinces form the third largest regional economy in the world and leaders from around the lakes have discussed ideas to maintain and build on the region's prosperity. I was pleased to attend. I look forward to continuing to bring forward the ideas of the representatives of the Great Lakes-St. Lawrence City's Initiative. I'd also like to mention some upcoming events in our community that will be of interest to members of council. The annual commemorative service for the Battle of Lundys Lane will take place on Sunday, July 27th at 12:30 at the Drummond Hill Cemetery. I encourage residents to attend to recognize this historic event that shaped our past. On Tuesday, August 12th, the Niagara Falls Public Library in Victoria Avenue will host the 87th Annual Flower and Vegetable Show. Awards will be presented at 4:00 PM. Again, I look forward to seeing many of our city's best gardeners and their outstanding submissions. I invite residents as well to come out to enjoy the first annual AutoNation Car Show being held at the Optus Park on Sunday, August 17th. This event is being hosted by the multicultural network of Niagara Falls. And also, I'd like to make some comments, members of council, with regard to the Niagara Health System announcement made last week. As you know, the NHS was agreed or was asked to put forward a plan to the local health integration network. The NHS has announced that they'll be making efforts to eliminate their almost eighteen million dollar a year deficit, operating deficit. The NHS has a requirement to reduce the deficit and to create efficiencies and this is only the first phase or the beginning of the process for the NHS. And locally, I wanted to assure, and I think we all do as a members of council, the best healthcare possible for our residents here in Niagara Falls. And we are very pleased that there will be an opportunity for the residents to be heard during the upcoming consultation process by the NHS. I'd like to advise that I had discussions with Ms. Seven Pfeiffer, the president, and I'm advised that members of the public or members of council can also go to the website at www.nagarehealth.on.ca to give input with regard to this submission. As you're aware, the agency has appointed the Ottawa, actually the Linn has appointed an Ottawa area physician, Dr. Jack Kits as an expert advisor to study this plan. And this plan has not been adopted. And I know that I'd like to ask, and I have heard from a couple doctors already and frontline healthcare professionals as to their input. I was advised that the clinical leaders have put forward their support of this plan, but I know there are some people who are certainly not happy. I share a concern that we will no longer having any further deliveries or births at the Niagara Falls site and also the transportation of those people requiring care, having to go to alternate locations. There hasn't been an answer to that question yet and I asked that question during the process where I was being advised as to what the plan posed. As a council, I'm sure we all want to hear from members of the community. So I would encourage our members of council to come forward if you wish to make a motion this evening. I think it would be in order to ensure that we can provide for the best healthcare possible for our residents and to bring direction to the Linn with respect to the plan submitted by the NHS. Counselor Ionone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you're done, we wanted to, we were going to raise this under new business.
Good, I hope, sure, please.
Well, now that you've brought that up now, you know, I've been racking my brain trying to figure out what moron thought that it was appropriate to take maternity in delivering babies out of Niagara Falls and lo and behold, it's a man. I am dead shocked that a man is deciding for women where we're going to have our babies now. Mr. Mayor, you, Counselor Peter Angelo and myself sat with a number of the physicians downstairs, I think it was three years ago, I think it was the end of 2005 actually. And we sat with them and, you know, remarkably, what the public doesn't understand is this HIP, what a funny acronym for this, this HIP is not anything new. Every doctor expressing their concern to us downstairs when the three of us sat with them told us these exact things. And the reality of the situation is, once you move maternity, you're moving pediatrics too. And as a matter of fact, all the parents in this city should be calling Kim Crater, calling us as council members, figuring out a way to fix this because basically they've said in the newspaper, if the proposal is approved and we have to start lobbying that Linn because it wasn't the Linn suggestion, this is the NHS's suggestion. So they've decided for the residents of Niagara Falls where we're going to have our babies. I find that humorous. But it also says that it's going to highlight a center of excellence for women and children's services. So basically, while they haven't pulled peds yet, they've pretty well given us the forewarning in the newspaper that they're going to do it. So not only can we not have our babies here, we can't even have our children cared for at GNGH because be clear, that's coming. So there's a problem with this, maybe not for the men. I mean, it can be treated at GNGH, but for any women who are watching this and for those of us sitting around here, and a number of us had high-risk pregnancies, if it wasn't for GNGH, I wouldn't have my ten-year-old. I can't imagine making that drive and I made the drive to time it to where the location is and the location sucks too. So that was their first mistake where they were putting it. But putting a pregnant woman, maybe spotting or in distress, in a car and having them drive out to that location, it's a good thirty-minute drive without traffic and we're going to send them there in a stressful situation. And what the NHS doesn't highlight is, are they going to start training the emerge nurses here how to deliver babies? Because you can be pretty clear. Because you can be pretty clear, if you're going into premature labor here, or you know, and if you had your second baby, trust me, you know how long you have to go, you're not going to drive there. You're going to come to emerge here, and you're going to have emergent nurses or emergent doctors delivering babies where there's not pediatric care there. This isn't thought through. I mean, their first problem is they can't balance their budget. That's not the problem of the residents of Niagara Falls. They need to find some internal mechanism to balance their own budget. But we can't be dependent on some strangers in a Linn at a Hamilton deciding for women how our obstetrical care, our gynecological care, isn't going to be here either, and neither's going to be care for our children. This is, this is an ultimate joke. After we sat at that meeting with the doctors a few years ago, one emailed me. The email date was January 27th, '05, and they had highlighted what we spoke about in our meeting, and one was program management and consolidation. Out of necessity, the NHS will be forced to consolidate and move medical programs for reasons of quality care and financial imperative. And they told us that downstairs. As a result, communities will see services to which they've become accustomed to moved, and they'll have to go elsewhere. As an example, you can expect the consolidation of women health services, obstetrics, and gynecology, and that will affect pediatrics, anesthesia, ENT, and all the medical services provided to women and children. This was in 2005. So if the NHS thinks we're a bunch of morons and we didn't see this train coming, they really need to think again. And I think we have to ask our MPP to be just a little bit more forceful on behalf of the women in this city who are going to be voting in the next election, and not to mention counting on having our care here. That's all I have to say. Counselor DiDati has put together a remarkable resolution that covers all those things. It doesn't cover the location, and it doesn't cover the fact that we can anticipate children's services being pulled in here too. But as a council, as a community, as our MPP, we really need to get on the ball here and say to the Linn, this is not acceptable, whether it's a letter-writing campaign to the Linn members through our MPP. But for God's sake, start screaming, because we're in serious trouble here. And you know what? Can we not make a trade with them? I'm humored. Corey wrote an article about crap speak. Oh, I call that little phrase they call it, centers of excellence, crap speak. Basically, all you're giving us is this phrase that's supposed to turn us on and make us feel warm and fuzzy over the services they're going to leave here, but can't we trade them plastics for maternity? I can't imagine them saying Niagara Falls will be a center of excellence for plastic surgery, but women can no longer have their babies born and serviced here. It's remarkable to me.
And Counselor, I appreciate your comments, and I know we're going to have some discussion about this this evening. I asked a question and to confirm, I believe, what was said to me during the information process. I received a call last week and spent about a half hour on the phone with the president and Dr. Schrag, his chief of staff. It's OBS, gynecology, and pediatrics are moving. And I asked a question about the staff, and I was told that the majority of the OBS docs are supportive of this plan. So I find that hard to believe, yet at the same time, I'd like to see us with a resolution coming forward. So everything you're talking about is supposed to be moved, I understand that. And that's not going to happen unless, well, if we make our point. This is a recommendation, I want to stress that, but I think it's very imperative that we do hear from the public. Yes?
Thank you. And, you know, the residents talk to us everywhere we go, whether you're grocery shopping, at the school, wherever you are. I was in Walmart Sunday, and it didn't matter where I went, I had people saying to me, you guys aren't going to let this happen, are you? Where, how are we going to get our kids taken care of? You're going to have to drive, and God forbid your kids in a hospital for any length of time, and you have to make that truck back and forth, and you still have children at home, and you have a job. This is asinine. This is in response to their inability to budget their, balance their budget. This is nothing to do with good planning, because this is not good planning for the residents of Niagara Falls.
Yes. Have Counselor DiDati and Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I do have a resolution that I'm going to bring forward here, but just before, a little prelude. You know, I've said before, you know, I feel somewhat like a mushroom, or that we're being treated as mushrooms, you know, kept in the dark and fed a lot of fertilizer. You know, I guess that's the word we'll have to use for tonight to keep it professional. But I'm most frustrated at the fact that we were misled and we were deceived by the, by the local NHS. It's really frustrating, because we had said, you know, it looks like a duck and it sounds like a duck, and they're saying, but, but it isn't a duck, when in fact, it certainly was a duck. And I guess it was proposed to me that perhaps their strategy was, they were afraid if our community turned against their plan, we wouldn't support their fundraising effort. Because as they know, Niagara Falls is a big contributor to the new center that's being built way down in the south end of St. Catherine's, and they didn't want to turn us off. And what a, what a Machiavellian approach. It was cunning, it was opportunistic, and frustrating, that this is a public group using our money to take care of our healthcare, and that they would play games with something as serious as that. And, you know, bigger isn't always better. Bigger certainly isn't always more efficient. And I see a lot of holes in this problem. You know, they, they go back to the fact, they like to use the word best practice. And just for fun, I Googled best practice, and Wikipedia had a real neat write-up on best practice, because it's a, it's a misused, overused buzzword these days. And, and I, I'll just read the one, two sentences, your worship, if I may. Often a misused term, frequently used to support politically correct ideals, which in reality, take no account of individual need or circumstance. In this sense, the ensuing practice is far from the best, when the resulting effects are contrary to the real ideal situation. It is also used to prevent challenges to rules and systems that are, in reality, not best practice. So using best practice and throwing that at the public, it's a way of maybe trying to tie their hands. Then, you know, in centers of excellence, they use a lot of these neat terminology. Then I went to their website. I was curious to find a little more of the governance of the NHS and how they make their decisions and who make the decisions, because as you know, it's a quasi-public board, because a lot of their decisions are made in private. And I love the last exemption to open meetings. As I was reading it, I could handle most of the exemptions, they were similar to us at city council, until I got to exemption M, their last exemption. The board, at its discretion, otherwise believes that it is in the best interest of the NHS that the meeting should be held in camera. So basically, when they feel it's necessary, they go in camera, which means it's a private meeting, and we don't see the outcome, or the dialogue to get to that outcome. The sad thing for those, the sad reality, your worship, is that no longer will a birth certificate have Niagara Falls as the birthplace of any future generations in Niagara Falls. You know, Niagara Falls is an iconic, with the iconic status that it does, won't be on birth certificates any longer. And it's funny, when you travel, even people that live outside the region, they'll say they're from Niagara Falls, because no one's heard of a lot of these other communities. Niagara Falls is better well-known in a lot of parts of the world than Toronto is. And that's, I think, a sad state. But the resolution, I think, effectively encapsulates some of our issues here with the council. I'd like to read it, your worship. We've already put it in resolution form, the clerk is kind enough to put it together and tidy it up. The motion reads, whereas the Niagara Health System, NHS, has repeatedly denied the planned closure of the Niagara Falls Labor and Delivery Unit since 2006, and whereas the release of the July 16th, 2008, of their hospital improvement plan, the HIP, the NHS plan is to accommodate all births in the Niagara region in St. Catherine's. And whereas, with an 11% increase, the majority of growth in new births has taken place right here in Niagara Falls. And whereas conversely, the largest decrease in birth rates in the region, at approximately 25% decrease, continues to be in St. Catherine's. And whereas with minimal urban growth opportunities present, as you know, they're landlocked, the trend of decreased birth rates in St. Catherine's will continue. And whereas Niagara Falls Council has gone on record on many occasions indicating that the proposed new hospital location in South St. Catherine's is not convenient, easily accessible, nor strategically placed to properly serve residents outside of St. Catherine's. And whereas labor and delivery are often unscheduled and necessitate the need for convenient and quick access. And whereas the HIP, as related to labor and delivery units, is not feasible until a Niagara Regional Transportation Service is in place and functional. And whereas with Niagara Falls playing host over 12 million visitors per year, it has some very unique healthcare challenges that call for the preservation of core services at the GNGH. And whereas, there's been an erosion in confidence in the NHS by elected officials and taxpayers alike. And whereas the NHS has shown an inability to date to balance its budget. And lastly, whereas as a result of the Hamilton Niagara-Haldeman-Brant Local Health Initiative Network, which is responsible for planning, integrating, and funding healthcare providers, has asked the NHS for its hospital improvement plan, therefore be it resolved, four parts here, that the alternative, the city council of Niagara Falls forward, think this, forward this resolution to the HNHB, Linn, and Dr. Jack Kits, the expert who's been chosen to review the hospital improvement plan. Further be it resolved that making any final decisions, before making any final decisions, the Linn have appropriate public consultation throughout the Niagara region. And further be it resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to the Minister of Health and Long-Term Care, the Honorable Mr. David Kaplan, Kim Crater, our MPP, Niagara Area Municipalities, and the Ontario Nurses Association. I saw a move.
Second, yeah, seconded by Counselor Iononi. I think it's an excellent resolution, counselor. You know, I did ask a number of those questions, and I think we have to go on record as opposing the recommendation. This has not been adopted, just to qualify, I understand that. And I asked your question with respect to a guarantee. The president responded that there was never any guarantees made when the question was asked, whether they would guarantee the service to be maintained here. Also, sharing in the concern about transportation, I can tell you, I asked the question at the time, are you planning, as the NHS, an internal system of transportation? So that if I went to the hospital and required service and I had to go to St. Catherine's, would you transport me or my family members to St. Catherine's on an internal system? And they had said that they didn't get that far yet. So I don't know if I can rely, and I think it's fair to say to our counselors here, that the region will have its system in place. Counselor Wing sits on the Transportation Steering Committee with me at the region, and I can tell you, I'm not sure if that system would be integrated at the time, or would it be thorough enough to cover the hospitals? That discussion hasn't come forward at this point. So I think some of your points are exceptionally well-made. So we do have a move in a second, Counselor Iononi, you're the second, and I have Counselor Thompson wants to speak.
Just to clarify.
Yes, okay. Okay, Counselor, if I could just, to that point?
Just to clarify, transportation, we've had a number of instances where we've raised the maternity department in this council chamber, and the last one was, there were three women in the span of, I think, eight days that had their babies here that were transferred off-site, and their fam, the husbands or spouses that didn't have transportation were left in Niagara Falls, and they had their babies without their partners. You know, they can't guarantee us anything. Ms. Seven Pfeiffer did not ever guarantee us that that maternity ward was safe. But you know what? They're not listening to their doctors either, Mr. Mayor. They told us downstairs, they're not listening to us. They told us here when Dr. Muir was here and spoke about utilization. They're, that would be, I can't understand planning a division and not speaking to the people who are going to work that division. Those men, you know, those doctors are saving lives, and they're not, their wishes are not being taken into account. And they've told us that in email and in person.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. Well, we talk about 2005 and 2006. I recall the formation of the Doctor Recruitment Program. Dr. Deck, Dr. Dickinson, Dr. Muir, Dr. Ainsley, all told us at that time, they're going to move the maternity to outside the city of Niagara Falls, obstetrics and pediatrics is going to follow as a result of that. But I think the resolution takes into consideration all aspects of that. But the key element with all of it is the transportation system. If that isn't in place, even for seniors trying to get appointments at, at hospitals and, and other situations, it's an impossible situation. It can't be done. Most of the elderly who are, have more health problems than the younger people are the ones that are going to have difficulty getting around and probably don't have a license or, or a vehicle to get them around. So all of this talk is, in my opinion, is totally premature until they get the transportation system into place. It was predicted six or seven years ago, and it must have been a reality, because I don't think all of these people could look into the future that far. I also have some serious concerns about our neighbors to the south, Ford area and Port Coburn. How do you close up, take away from their hospital facilities, but how do you give them a 14-hour emergency hospital situation? You know, people don't get sick during a 14-hour period. It's a 24-hour period, but I think certainly the mayors in those particular areas are competent to fight that situation. But it's rather shocking to think that they can automatically make a recommendation to cut off emergency ward, instruct people to change their whole routine of life by suggesting changes without having the opportunity for transportation. I compliment the Alderman for the resolution and what's been done. I think it's a starting point, but we've got a long way to go with this one.
Counselor DiDati?
Thank you, your worship. And I just did want to clarify, I said South St. Catherine's, it's West St. Catherine's. I just wanted to clarify that. And also, and encourage people, talk to your doctor. They need to hear, we need to band together, because if this happens, there'll be no going back, so worship. I hope that everybody will...
And I think that's the message we want to get across, is we need communication and input right now. Counselor Wing?
Yes, I'd like to commend Counselor DiDati as well for an excellent, excellent presentation. The information on birth rates is absolutely crucial. The fact that this city's birth rates are climbing, St. Catherine's are decreasing, and one thing that we have to remember as well is, this is the second-largest city in the region. To take away the maternity ward from the second-largest city is asinine. This proposal that the NHS has put forward is not going to improve access, as they claim. Instead, it is going to impede access, and I think that has to be stressed. It's going to impede access, and I am wholeheartedly in support. This is great.
Thank you. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. And I think that the, the issue has been covered quite, quite well by the counselors that spoke in front of me. I guess the only thing that I'd like to express, your worship, is, is my disappointment in the fact that when we did have representatives from the NHS down to council chambers, those are the questions that we asked, and, and as was stated already, those weren't the answers that we received. And yet every time that we had a chance or the opportunity to talk to a doctor or any other healthcare professional, they always told us the, the plan that was in store that the NHS had for, for these services that we have here in our city. And having them in our council chambers, again, when we asked the questions, that's not the answers we received. So it becomes difficult, your worship, to trust what they say, and I find that very disappointing.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Fisher?
Thank you. Two weeks ago, I went to a senior's birthday party. They used to live here in Niagara Falls all their life and have recently moved to Port Coburn. They have MS, and their experience with the Port Coburn Hospital is absolutely excellent, taken care of immediately. They come here to Niagara Falls. It is a long process, a very bad experience, and they've also called Kim Crater on it to tell them about the experience. So is bigger better? I don't think so.
Any other comments? We do have an excellent resolution before us, and again, I'd like to commend Counselor DiDati. So we'll deal with the resolution, all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you very much. We'll send that off promptly. At this point, we've gone to communications and comments from the city clerk. Item number one, we have various requests from various BIAs to pay, for the pay parking rate changes in the tourist corps, that the bylaws listed later in the agenda be approved as well. Counselor Fisher? Sorry?
I would like to just go back on your, your announcements. We've had a couple deaths. Jim Harrington?
I'm sorry? Jim?
Yep.
Jim Harrington, sir?
Heatherington.
Oh, Jim Heatherington, I'm sorry.
From, from our city. And Craig Whitehouse?
Okay, I don't know these individuals. And Craig Whitehouse, is it?
Debbie Whitehouse.
Oh, yes, of course. Yes, he was, that's right, she's with the Parks Commission. We sent letters off to Ms. Whitehouse, Mrs. Whitehouse, and also, we'll do that, same for Mr. Harrington.
Yeah, your worship, also the death of Dr. Ronald Banting.
Yes.
Condolences to the Banting family, noted dentist and a very generous man, and a means to at the Niagara Falls Bevanin Club.
Yes, we did send a letter as well to their family today. And also, you may notice, there was a, a memorial service this evening for the mother of Mr. Felix Pingway, Mrs. Filomena Pingway, and that she passed away in Italy two weeks ago, and the letters of condolences have been sent out to members of council. We have members of council as well. Thank you for reminding us of that. So we have, item number one, requests from various BIAs with regard to pay parking rate changes.
I would move the report as...
Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel DiDati. Any comments further? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion is carried, thank you. Also, request the International Joint Commission from the region supporting the nomination of the IJC for Stockholm Water Prize, and that request the 2009 be-proclaimed year of our shared waters. Recommendation that the request to be approved, moved by Counsel Fisher, seconded by Counsel Maves. Any discussion? All those in favor? The motion is carried. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for the council's consideration this evening?
Your Worship, in your handouts, there's a resolution that's related to the downtown events. There's a couple more events coming up, as you're aware, Daredevil Days and Days of Elvis, and similar to their Springalicious event. They require council to pass a resolution declaring these community events, that's so they can get their liquor permit for the events, and also that council has been requested to approve the exemption of the noise bylaw, so they can have live entertainment until 11:30 in this area. The city, the exemption is 9 o'clock.
Can we deal with that one first, then? Any discussion?
Together, it's all the same.
Together, okay, we'll put that included as well. Yes, Counsel Thompson?
Yes, through you, to the clerk, does that, is that similar motion to the other Springalicious resolutions? Does that include city assisting with the event through the city forces?
City's working with them on the events, and as far, this doesn't include in-kind services, but we're working that out with them, and we'll come forward with something in the future.
Can we include this in the resolution at this particular time?
What we're preparing to do is, they will be providing us with invoices, and we've got the various pools of money, the CIP, and the $50,000 from the-
OPG.
The OPG, so we're not, we will be able to work with them on this. So we're proceeding on that direction.
Shouldn't it be included in the motion at this time, to give them?
Well, we do have, we have provided them with additional funds, Counselor, but Mr. McDonald, have you had any discussions with them, with respect to that?
I haven't, but there-
Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Just specifically to that, they gave me a very late correspondence on Friday, so we weren't able to get all the details on what they're requesting. We could still take care of that on the 18th of August after the Daredevil Days. The way the process worked with Springalicious is, they provide us with receipts for the costs, for security and that sort of thing, and it comes out of the CIP account. So we were proceeding under the same basis.
Okay, that, I've been involved also, and they were supposed to have that letter in. To be on this agenda for approval, it only became, only came to you on Friday, I would, and it's basically the same as the Springalicious, where the community, or the city is going to support them in their activities as far as barriers and manpower and whatever, I'd like to include that in the motion, so that we have that cleared up. I see no sense in bringing it in after the, after the event on the 15th, 16th, and 17th. It should be done now, ahead of time, and I would include that in the motion.
Going to make that a motion, then?
Yes.
Seconded to the motion, Counsel Fisher. We'll deal with that one separately, to approve, to include it. This is to include it in the reports. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried, fine. Now we have the reports to deal with, members of council. Move or seconder? Do you want to deal with them at all? Counsel Thompson?
Yeah, I don't know about the rest of council, but I had a busy week this last week, and all of these, 1, 2, 3, 4, I don't care about, 5, I don't care about. I think 1, 2, and 3, wonder if we can defer that to our August meeting. I was, attempted to get some research on that, but I didn't have the time, and I'd like to do that.
We have a motion to defer items 1, 2, and 3, is your seconder?
The reserves, the capital-
Yeah.
Yes, 1, 2, and 3.
That's perfect, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a seconder, Counsel Iainoni. The referral motion, a referral motion is not debatable. All those in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, please raise your hands. It's unanimous, thank you very much. The balance? Moved by Counsel Fisher, seconded by Counsel DiDati. We'll take those as well. All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. We have ratification of Community Services Committee, I'd call on the Chair, Counsel Iainoni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The minutes of July 7th, 2008 meeting be approved. Under Presentations, Mr. Steve Tokos of 5890 Main Street, that Mr. Tokos' presentation be received and filed. Under Reports, BBS 2008-02, Niagara Falls Optimist Club Dorchester Road sign bylaw variance, that the signed bylaw variance request be approved. MW 2008-40, Rail Grade Separation Status Report, that the status report be received for information, and that council direct staff to continue to explore potential funding opportunities to implement this project or the relocation of the rail line throughout the city. MW 2008-45, Morrison Street Rail Grade Separation Alternative, that the mayor contact the federal Member of Parliament, appraising him of the city's concern with regarding the length and number of trains transversing the city, and that the city pursue the rerouting of the CN trains, and staff come back with the terms of reference for an ad hoc committee on the matter. Under New Business, A, that staff investigate, report back on the Second Avenue residents' complaints, B, staff investigate weeds on Murray Street, and C, staff investigate the region tendering the online painting contract at the Niagara Parks Commission.
It should be the line painting, maybe, rather than online?
I'm reading what it says. Line painting at the Niagara Parks Commission.
Line painting, right?
Line painting, yes.
Okay, so you're moving that, Counselor?
Okay.
Seconded by Counsel DiDati. Any comments or questions? Counsel Thompson?
Just for the council's information, Mr. Issipan did show up for the 7 o'clock meeting. He specifically said that Dean Arafida said it was at 7 o'clock.
We have a motion before us. Counsel Wing?
I didn't think it really, the last motion was really related to the Niagara Parks Commission, it was more related to the region being involved in tendering.
She said that.
Okay, because I have a conflict with the Parks Commission, I don't have a conflict with the region, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. We'll move on to the consent, I'm sorry, to the, yes, consent agenda. Members of council, yes, Counsel Peter Angelo?
Aye, Your Worship, can you pull that 2008 here?
I'm sorry, can't hear you?
F2008 here, too.
Okay. Yes, we'll pull that, and the rest?
Move the balance.
Move the balance by Counsel Peter Angelo and Counsel Carrio. Any comments or questions further? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. And Counselor, you wanted to pull the 1 report?
I did, Your Worship. I guess just to speak to, Your Worship, the report is about the, it's the transit credit card report, and I guess I've been waiting quite a while for this to come back, I think, more than a year, Your Worship. As I look at the report, and it's not that lengthy, so I guess the first thing that pops out is the fact that over the course of some time, Your Worship, $20,000 was spent on food, and I guess we don't know whether or not there was any, whether or not there was any alcohol that was involved in that, because we don't actually have receipts. We only have a credit card statement. First thing that comes to mind, Your Worship, to me anyway, is that this is very gluttonous, and in my opinion, it's a blatant misuse of public funds. I guess what bothers me even more is the mind frame of some of the people that were involved, almost as if they were, they were entitled to spend this money on themselves. And let's make no mistake about it, they were paid to do this. So just to, just to put it in perspective, you have a Board of Directors for the Transit Commission that was not only paid, but they were paid to spend our money on themselves while dining at fine, at fine restaurants. I guess the hypocrisy of it all, really, is that part of the mandate of the Transit Commission is to ensure that there's affordable service for the less fortunate people in our city. So I guess, I have a couple of questions, Your Worship, for staff, and I'll start off by asking whether or not, and it doesn't matter to me who answers this, is this considered to be a misuse of funds?
You'd like to pose that question, too?
Whoever wishes to answer it, Your Worship, it can be our CAO, it can be Mr. Burden, whoever you like.
Mr. McDonald?
That's not a black and white question, and I would suggest that it is not uncommon at all for committees to have their expenses for meals picked up. It depends on the circumstances, and each one is different. I mean, we just had a supper downstairs for council before we came up. So if people work through or have working meetings, it's not uncommon at all to have those expenses covered in that regard, so in a broad context. In terms of any particular item on here, and whether or not people went overboard on that, we really don't have that information, so I really couldn't say. But the nature of covering meals at working meetings is not a non-common use of city funds.
Well, it'd be pretty easy to find out, Your Worship, that, I guess the fact of the matter is that the Transit Commission used to meet- And then go for lunch or dinner after that. So I'm not sure, is that considered to be a working meeting?
That's not a practice that any other committee that we're involved in carries out.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Just, I'll clarify the point as well, in terms of alcohol, alcohol is not an expense that's normally covered through city accounts.
Okay, I'll go on to ask, then, I guess, what would we do to an employee or a committee that acted in this manner? Let's say that they had their meeting, and then they went out afterwards for dinner, and then expensed it back to the city. What would we do?
Again, if it was a meeting that was taking place in town, I assume that's what we're referring to, they would be asked to reimburse those expenses.
Okay. Do we have a policy against misuse of public funds?
We do. We have a policy relative, actually, to the use of credit cards as well, and it's made very clear that personal use of credit card is not acceptable, and we do audit those statements. This, of course, we're referring to a reference here that took place before the city was, our finance department was directly involved in auditing those statements.
I understand.
In terms of our normal business that city staff are involved in, meals are not covered after an event. If a person is out of town, again, I don't know the circumstances on these. If an employee was involved in a training seminar outside of town after the meeting, and had a meal before they came home, or because they were staying over, that would be quite acceptable. So each circumstance is probably a little bit different.
Okay. One more question, actually. Do our policies extend to organizations that receive public funds?
Yeah, I would think that, I would think, Counselor, that that would not be referenced for committees that get, you're thinking of groups like, i.e. the Recreation Committee, who-
Well, yeah, not even that. I mean, if we give a $50,000 grant to an organization, and then that organization is going out and doing what they want with the funds-
We would not get into that kind of detail, but clearly, if we're giving a $50,000 grant, we, it's fairly specific in terms of what we expect that money to be used for, so, and typically would not be used for this kind of purpose at all.
Okay. I guess, Your Worship, to close then, what bothers me most is that the city hasn't actually stood up and denounced this type of, this type of activity. We haven't stood up and said that it's absolutely unacceptable to do this, and we're the governing body that controls these funds, and we haven't stood up and said that this is wrong, and that this shouldn't take place under our control. So I mean, like, I think it'd be nice, Your Worship, for someone at least to stand up and say that, you know, we don't do these type of things, and that we don't allow people to use public funds in this manner, as they have been in the past.
Well, Counselor, I'd like to answer that as well. When I became mayor, the first thing I suggested that we do not engage in purchasing alcohol on any receipts. If there was entertainment expense, that that would be put on a separate credit card. You come back, you're department head, recall sitting in the committee room to discuss that with our CAO and also department heads, and to the best of my knowledge, that hasn't taken place. If there is a situation where it's a cultural thing and wine is served at lunch, I would understand that, but we'd ask the employees, if they do engage that, that they have a separate credit card purchase for that, and they'd be reimbursed after they've been given approval. So that was brought to the attention of staff in early 2003. I recall sitting with the CAO and our staff in that direction. So, Mr. McDonald?
Just to further my previous comments, just on behalf of the current city operation, our policy is pretty firm relative to the use of city funds for personal use. Alcohol is prohibited, and those statements are reviewed and signed off by a supervisor monthly when those accounts come in.
And I guess I should say, Your Worship, that, I think Mr. McDonald might be getting his back up a little bit. I'm not at all directing my comments at city staff, and I have 100% trust that they're using, you know, their expenses in accordance with our policy.
Yes. We have Counsel Thompson and Counsel Maves.
Thank you both.
Counsel Maves?
Yes, Your Worship. I was on transit during those years, some of those years, not all of them, but I'm looking at those expenses, which were $19,000 over seven years. Okay, during those seven years, the garage made profit of approximately $400,000 a year, which is about $2.8 million. I defy any business to business development and take their customers out to lunch and dinner and make that kind of profit with that so little expense. Since the entertainment has stopped at Niagara Transit, they've lost their largest account, which amounts to, I think we found out last meeting, a loss of revenues of about $125,000. So I think, I think annually, Transit used to get together Trentway, Coach Canada, some of the various other people, and take them home for dinner. And naturally, it was in entertainment, and this is where a lot of these expenses are. It was not strictly staff that was having that. So I just want to clarify that. If I could run my business and only spend $19,000 on entertainment in seven years and make $2.8 million, I defy any business that can do that. Thank you.
Okay, wait a second now. All right, to that point, first of all, Peter, Counsel-
Just on that point, Your Worship, and I'm not sure if Counsel Maves is trying to insinuate that all of these expenses here were for entertaining, but I mean, I would challenge any member of the Transit Commission to stand up and try to tell me now that they didn't, as a Transit Commission, just by themselves, go out for dinner or for lunch after meetings. So don't tell me that all, that all these were for entertainment purposes.
Okay. All righty, we have Counsel Thompson and Counsel Iainoni.
Yep, thank you. When I saw this report after probably almost two years when we had the first debate, what kind of report is this? It doesn't, it didn't respond to any of the concerns or questions or comments that were made at the particular time. But the positive thing is, what's been done for 35 years previously, up until a few years ago, no longer exists and no longer happens. The council is now responsible for transit, and that was the objective at the time, and that's why what happened in the past is not going to happen in the future. And I know that Mr. McDonald and the administration have put in stringent requirements for the spending of public funds the way it should be. But this report just touches the surface of the debate and the discussions that went on previously with respect to trips and other expenses with respect to the Transit Commission. It was always said that these were for promotional purposes, and they were assisting in generating business for the Transit Commission. Well, since 9/11, the bus traffic has been down 28%, and it's still sliding on an annual basis as a result of the, all of the difficulties we have in attracting the US customers. So no matter what kind of promotion, if you do promotion today, you do your marketing electronically, and not the way it was done in the past, but this report doesn't even skim the surface of the debate and the discussion that took place previously, and I was hoping that this would just be a first indication of what was being carried on at the Transit Commission. So hopefully, this is not the end of it, and there will be further reports going over all of the questions that were asked at the, at the time of this debate, which went on for a considerable period of time. But hopefully, that, that will happen. Anyway, I don't know why this was even brought, although it does highlight some of the problems that existed, and the reason why the Transit Commission is no longer in business is because of that. So I just hope that we can have further reports on the serious questions that were asked at the time, which have never materialized after two years.
Mr. McDonald?
Just on that, I know one of the key questions was the use of funds, particularly as it related to meals, which would include alcohol and so on. When we reviewed the credit card expense, as you can see, we don't have the details. The only way to get those details is to go back to individual restaurants, and it's a fairly substantial review. At a staff level, I'm looking here for direction, at a staff level, we felt that there was nothing to be gained by doing that, because it was, it was acknowledged, and again acknowledged tonight, that alcohol was part of that expense. There's no secret to that. It was not uncommon at those meals, at those, with those expenses, that alcohol was part of that expense. We know that. So to go back and spend a lot of staff time and energy and money to determine that exact point seems somewhat redundant, so, but we think the point is made here, and I appreciate your comments, because whatever was the habits of that time don't exist today. And to be honest, we didn't feel we should put additional resources into going back to determine what we already know. So there is, unless council gives us direction tonight, we are not going to be spending- So there is, unless council gives us direction tonight, we are not going to be spending more time on this issue, so, so, clarifying.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Thompson?
Yep. I guess if you really wanted to find out what was going on, you'd have to, not specifically credit cards, but go back through all of the files. You'd probably have to have an extensive interview with the previous manager, and that's probably something that is going to be very difficult to do. So I appreciate your comments, but I was surprised and shocked a couple of weeks ago to hear Counselor Wing indicate that we had lost a substantial amount of money by one of the major carriers pulling out. Since that time, I haven't seen a report. I know there was a question asked, but I would like to be informed how that happened. The, the concern that I have is that maybe the people were not approached properly and encouraged because there was a change in the commission to make sure that they carried on. The loss of that, and I understand they're just going someplace else in the community for their services, that's, that's a huge loss to us. And why did it happen? I think, Council, even if it has to be a committee report, it should be brought up to date on exactly the reasons why Trentway Wagler are not still coming to this community because that may be the start of a real problem for us if any of the other major people are not, are feeling the same way. I would like a report back on that at some point.
Just on that, staff is preparing a report to provide the details on that. I think last week, it was a quick verbal summary given, but there is a report being prepared for council.
Counselor Iannone and Counselor Maves?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm assuming we did an excellent interview when they took their business somewhere else to tell us why they went somewhere else, so that that could be a part of the report that comes back to council. But through you to Mr. May, to Counselor Maves, are you intimating that they left because we didn't wine and dine them again?
Counselor Maves?
I was just gonna, that was gonna be, what I was gonna say is that I have called Mr. Devlin and reached him on his, on his voicemail. He wasn't in, he was playing golf. He called me back, I was playing golf. I've since called him again, and, and I'm buying him a lunch next time he's in town at my expense, okay? And I'm gonna try and find out just exactly why they did leave. I know that Mr. Dren has sent him a letter requesting information, and I don't think he's received anything back from him, so. I'm hoping, and also, I'll be attending the Ontario Motor Coach Association Golf Tournament at my expense, and hopefully, we can get to the bottom why, exactly why they left.
Thank you.
Good for you to staff. Did we do an excellent interview with them to have them tell us why?
Mr. McDonald?
What we've done, we've attempted, not only, as Mr. Maves says, we've written to them and asked them to have a meeting with us. Our staff have made numerous calls to various people within the organization, and we have not been getting a response, so. And as Mr. Maves said, he's been trying at his end and still not getting a response. So we've been attempting to clarify. We received, as pointed out last week, like a two or three day notice that we're no longer going to be serviced at the shop. There is a new business in town, a private business that did not exist before, and, you know, we've been given the impression that simply, suddenly, there's a private sector competitor, and the numbers seem to attract them and other occasions. But we don't have that kind of detail, and we've been attempting from numerous facets to get the data, and that's one of the reasons why we haven't reported back to council, because we're trying to really get a handle on that. And, and not just why it happened, but, you know, what do we do to shore our business going forward? And what do we do long-term strategically? Now there's a private business, it's not unlike the comments made earlier, you know, there's a private business now in town providing that service. Do we beef up our service now to go into direct competition? Do we acknowledge there's a change in the market? There are issues that we're considering.
Well, thank you. I, I just think when you listen to other councils around here, I'm concerned in regards to costs with the former commission. When Counselor Puddick got on there, these were the things he was telling us, that this is what was happening. And just to, when you use the analogy that $19,500 is a little amount to put into trying to keep a contract, when you, or men, or increase your bus service, they spent $19,520.84 on meals over six years, and over six years, they only spent $724.91 on advertising. To me, that just doesn't even make sense, so...
Hang on a second, just for the clerk. That's just on the credit card?
Well, that's just on the general manager's credit card.
Okay. This is just the general manager's credit card?
Correct. There's only one credit. He was the only one who had a credit card.
Okay.
All righty, Counselor Maves, you wish to say anything further?
No, I made my point. I'm trying, still trying to get in touch with Mr. Devlin, and as soon as I do, I'll report back.
Okay. Move on to the...
Receiving file.
Receiving file, motion to receiving file. Counselor Iannone, Counselor Maves. Okay, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Move on to... Okay, one contrary, okay? Also then, Mr. Clerk, move on to the bylaws or the additional bylaws or amendments to the bylaws for the council's consideration.
Just one, Your Worship, related to one of the reports on the consent agenda, the nuisance bylaws in your handouts. So that'll be law 2008-126, and the confirmatory bylaw will be 2008-127.
Okay, can I have a bylaw to give the motion, sorry, can I have a motion to give the bylaws a first reading? Thank you. I move by Counselor Peter Angel, second by Counselor DiDati. Counselors heard the motion, any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried.
Bylaws 2008-120 to 2008-127 read a first time.
I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading, moved by Counselor Peter Angel, second by Counselor DiDati. Once again, counsel has heard the motion, any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried.
Bylaws 2008-120 to 2008-127 read a second, third time passed.
Thank you. Is there any new business tonight? Counselor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had to, we discussed the hospital, but I have a, I have a resolution that I'd like to put forward after I do a brief summary of it. We've been reading in the paper recently about the problems of the Niagara Parks Commission, and, you know, Jim called the N H S a quasi-public board, while I haven't seen anybody more quasi-public than the Niagara Parks Commission. And in the last few series of articles, it's been predominantly Ripley's, Mr. Gale, and now, last week, in the Niagara Falls Reporter, in the U.S. paper, the Seneca Casino is now eyeing the same questions that Ripley's looked at here in regards to the tendering process to the contract for the Maid of the Mist. And first, I want to go through you to Counselor Carrio. The Parks Commission made a decision in regards to the contract with the Maid of the Mist and the Glynns, the Glynns. Where is that sitting right now? I know, is it up to a committee of the province now to approve the decision by the Parks Commission?
Counselor Carrio?
I think that's been sent to be approved by, either by cabinet or by the provincial government, is done and, and sent to the...
Well, I have a resolution, I just wanted to make sure we were sending it to the right body.
Sent to the province, to, to the provincial government.
Okay, thank you. In this, in this Seneca newspaper article, it highlights the monopoly that the Glynns have in regards to the Maid of the Mist and the contract awarded through the Parks Commission. And, you know, we watch appointments be made to the Parks Commission, and I quite frankly don't know anybody appointed to the Parks Commission who doesn't shoot so straight from the hip as Bob Gale. And as I'm reading the comments in the paper in regards to the problems with the IMAX contract and the problems with the Parks Commission dealing with the company that deals with the IMAX contract that, that they had in regards to their questions on the Fury, and now the questions being asked in regards to the tendering process for the Maid of the Mist and the fact that there's no answers. I don't understand a semi-quasi-public board that doesn't have to answer to anybody but themselves or the province, and quite frankly, they don't do that very often either. And this is no disrespect to Counselor Carrio. I understand now that when you get to the Parks Commission, you sign this, this document of confidentiality and secrecy so that you can't speak about really what's going on in your in-camera meetings to people in the public, and we've, we've watched Mr. Gale say that in the newspaper a number of times. He's bound by the confidentiality agreement that, that he signs. Quite frankly, Bob Gale has supported this city every time we ask him, well above and beyond. He puts his money where his mouth is, and he says, look, it all supports you in this, the arena is a point in fact. You know, I read the newspaper in the last little while, and Pete Conrady's summation of their trip to Africa, where out of altruism, he went and built a school in Africa. This is not somebody who does things mindlessly and aimlessly. He's got a purpose to it. I think, and if you read the comments in the paper, it's not, it's not the, the end result that he has a problem with, it's the process that's followed to get the end result. The Seneca Casino is asking the same questions. The Seneca Gaming Corp wants to be able to wrest the incredibly lucrative Maid of the Mist franchise from the James Glyn of Lewiston, who's amassed a public fortune largely from a secret agreement he has with the governments of New York and Ontario. Now, this, this article is pretty concise, and it walks through how the Glynns took over the hugely profitable Maid of the Mist, how much revenue they, they figure that they're generating. But I found it very interesting to find out that, like the casino itself, the Maid of the Mist operation pays nothing in city taxes. I didn't know that. I thought it was a business like every other business that pays taxes to the city, but apparently, they don't. And while the Senate, and the closing line is, while the Seneca may or may not eventually try to force an open bidding process that would ensure the state collects its fair share, and I would say the city collects its fair share of what might be applicable taxes or, or a cut in the boat revenue, many feel here like the Kremlin-like secrecy shrouding the Maid of the Mist Corp's peculiar relationship with the state and the province that it enjoys are in much need of a healthy dose of sunshine. Then maybe the people of Niagara Falls can determine how much money generated within their borders are being shipped one way to either the province or to Albany and Lewiston. Really, they're saying the same thing Mr. Gale said, and nobody came out and supported Mr. Gale, and I was a little surprised in that, considering what he does for us. So I've come up with, with a resolution, and it's that the province take action to ensure that the principles of open transparency and accountability be applied to the proceedings of the Niagara Parks Commission. And I'd like to so move that and have that sent to the governing body that's making the decision in regards to the tendering process for the Maid of the Mist. If we have companies within Niagara Falls that are successful here, would like to bid on that, and don't have an opportunity because the parks have tied up that tendering process, I really think we should ask the province to make it more open, accountable, and transparent, and maybe then we can see what's actually going on up there, so you don't have to sign this Water Buffalo Grand Poobah, you know, pledge of secrecy, so you can't come out and tell the rest of the community actually what's going on there.
Counselor Wing?
I have to declare conflict on this. A member of my family is employed at the Niagara Parks.
Okay, we have a resolution on the floor. Counselor Carrio?
Well, thank you, Your Worship. Just a couple of comments. I think that, you know, Alderman Iannone is correct in, in one area, is that the government of Ontario, the rules governing the way the Niagara Parks Commission operates rests solely with the government of Ontario. I can assure this council and the mayor and the council that I'm doing my best to represent the council and the citizens of Niagara Falls as their representative on the Niagara Parks Commission, considering we're bound by a confidentiality agreement on the details of the business operation of the Parks Commission. I don't think that stops us from talking about the way that they're governed. They're governed by the rules that are set out by the province. If we have a problem with the way the Parks Commission is running or is governed, it rests completely with the provincial government. If you want to change anything, it has to be done by the province. The Parks Commission is functioning well within the rules that, that are given to them by the province. So if you're not happy with it, I guess this is the way to do it. You've complained to the province. I think our Member Provincial Parliament has already started the process, or had started the process, to try and get the meetings in, out into the open. I don't know where he is with that as we speak today, but it rests solely with the province.
Counselor Fisher?
I have to declare conflict, the member of my town who works for the Parks Commission.
You have two conflicts noted. Do I have a second or to the resolution?
We have a resolution, you have any other...
Uh, Mr. Clerk, did you get it? Counselor Iannone?
Thank you. That the province take action to ensure that the principles of openness, transparency, and accountability be applied to the proceedings of the Niagara Parks Commission. And as Counselor Carrio said, if we don't go, we can't make that decision for them, we have to ask the province to do it. And I know MPP Crater once upon a time brought a bill for open, transparent, and accountable public bodies, but that really isn't going anywhere. And I think if you have three different entities speaking out in the last six weeks in regards to processes taking place or processes not taking place, maybe as a council, we need to ask the province to make it a little bit more open and transparent. Because I remember the first time I asked a question here of you, Mr. Mayor, you cited that confidentiality agreement that you went in there and had to sign, and really, I don't understand the council putting a liaison there, and the liaison being bound by a confidentiality agreement. Really, legally, Counselor Carrio's fiduciary responsibility as a boarder director for the Niagara Parks Commission is to the Niagara Parks Commission and not to this council. So he's bound by legal agreement to them, whereas he can't turn around and say, yeah, you know what, this is the tendering process going on or not going on, because they're bound by really an asinine agreement. And quite frankly, this council doesn't have to put a member of this council on that commission, we just have to appoint anybody. But it wouldn't matter who we appointed, they still wouldn't be able to come back and report to us due to how strict the Niagara Parks Commission, the strict rules they bound their commissioners by. So really, he's, he's a Parks Commission member participating with the Parks Commission, he's really not a liaison to this council. And not by his fault, it's by the fault of the province and the Parks Commission. Make it more open, transparent, and accountable, and let us know what the heck's going on up there.
Counselor Peter Angel, are you seconding the motion, resolution? Okay. Any further discussion? Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. The resolution, in my opinion, is, is too vague. What are, what are we looking for? You mentioned the agreement with the Glynns, and I think you've got to be specific about what you're looking for. You want to make a general comment to make it all more open and accountable and transparent, which is a favorite phrase around here. I, I think that it should say that generally, but be specific on, on the points that you're talking about, that you want a response. You want to find out what's going on with, with the Glyn agreement. And I think we should say that specifically, and I don't mind the general comment about the openness, but I think we have to be specific if you want to get any kind of a response with respect to where that stands.
Okay, pleasure, counsel. Counselor Iannone?
So Counselor Thompson, are you saying we can leave the body of the resolution, but maybe add an addendum saying specifically addressing the tendering process in regards to the Niagara Parks Commission?
To the, to the Maid of the Mist.
To the Maid of the Mist?
Mm-hmm.
Well, what I'd like to, what I'd like to not see is the council that it's sitting before approve it before they really look at, at open, transparent, and accountable. Because they'll approve that long-term, I think it's 50 years or whatever we read in the...
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years, whatever we read. But to me, that's a monopoly. If you don't have an opportunity to send it out, they might be able to be doing it cheaper and get a greater rate of return. You're not going to know because the monopoly is with the one company. So I'll add the, I'll add the, the addendum specifically regarding the tendering process of the Maid of the Mist contract.
Counselor Peter Angel, are you seconding that as well?
Who are we asking this to?
And that the question is, who do you...
You said go to the province.
Do you want to direct it to the Minister of Tourism?
I'll take care of it.
Well, I understand it's sitting before a committee. I just, because in the newspaper, it said it's before a committee to be approved. That's why I asked Counselor Thompson, I mean, Counselor Carrio, what exact committee is it in? So let's send it to the Minister of Tourism, and if we're at the wrong committee, ask them to redirect it.
Okay. We have a resolution before us, members of council. Yes, Counselor Carrio?
Your Worship, we all know that the business of the Parks Commission at this point is not public knowledge, so you're not going to get any information.
Well, that's why we're asking for...
Okay.
We can only try, Mr. Mayor.
That's fine. Okay, we have a resolution, we have two conflicts declared. Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you very much. And a new business? Motion to adjourn. Counselor Maves and Counselor Peter Angel, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.